I'm going to call the meeting of the West Des Moines Community Schools Board of Education to order. Peggy, would you please note the role and when your name is called, please respond that you are present? Hold on a minute, Peggy, you're muted there. There we go.
Liz Cox.
Yep, present.
Jennifer Uliwells.
Here.
Elizabeth Brennan.
Here.
Jill Caton Johnson.
Here.
Lonnie Daphne.
Present.
Jeff Hicks.
Here.
Vicki Poole.
Present.
Great. Before we get to our board agenda, I just had a statement I wanted to make for my fellow board members as we face some exciting decisions this evening. I think there's one thing that we've all learned during our experience since March, March 13th, when our world's changed as school board leaders and even as staff, teachers, and families in our community when COVID came to town here. And one thing I've learned in my role, and I wear many hats in this COVID experience, is that I've had to become real comfortable with being uncomfortable. And I think I've shared that with us in the past. And we've been really uncomfortable since March. This is not how we like to do education, kind of a little bit by the seat of our pants, right? When we think about all the changes that we had to make at the spur of the moment last spring, the decisions that we needed to make for our staff and for our families were critical decisions. And we have more decisions facing us tonight. And I think that, you know, given the workshop that we just walked through, we've had to make decisions all along the way without the benefit of a whole lot of clear guidance of this is exactly how you should do it. You know, when this happens, then we've had to make those decisions with the best information that we've had available at the time. And whether we make a decision tonight or next week or the week after, though, there's a pretty high likelihood that that decision might change in August or October or January, depending on how COVID decides to roll through our community. And I'm very confident that, given the information that we have tonight, that we as leaders of our district will be able to make the best decision we can make right now with the information that we have right now. And I want to commend our staff and our board for all you've done to listen to our community, listen to the experts, ask the hard questions, and be solution oriented. So tonight's probably one of the most challenging meetings we'll have as leaders. And I want to thank you in advance for your leadership in listening to your community and having the courage to make a decision tonight on lots of things, but especially our return to learn plan. So thank you for that, Grace. I'll go ahead and move then forward in the agenda. Item number three is our equity update. Dr. Ramey, I know you've got a report there.
Yeah, I'm actually good. Thank you, Liz. I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Side to share around our process with the job description for our new executive director of Equity Inclusion and Diversity and the process and timeline for hiring.
Thank you, Dr. Ramey. So I'm happy to be able to share that we sought out feedback from a variety of sources, some of our neighboring districts and other districts around the state associated with this position. We also had an opportunity to meet with some critical friends, I'll call them, including Dr. Katie Swalwell at Iowa State University, as well as some of our Valley High School students and staff members. And so they provided some great feedback for us. And we had created a draft. They gave us feedback. And so we used their feedback in order to create the job description for the Executive Director of Equity Inclusion and Diversity. We continue to work with some of those same groups in order to conduct some of our additional equity work, things like our listening sessions and our the opportunity to have a town hall, virtual town hall in association with our core students. So that would be more information coming later. But really, we talked about this position and the specialness of this position in order to make sure that there's leadership in the development and execution of our programs, our initiatives and training that promote and support equity, inclusion, and diversity in our district. This individual would really engage faculty, staff, and students to develop an anti-racist, anti-oppressive, and inclusive culture. And so those are just pieces. And there's quite an extensive list of qualification and job responsibilities. But really, the focus is supporting our students, supporting our staff, and supporting our community, especially our marginalized individuals in order to ensure greater equity throughout our system. So that position has been posted. I'm happy to say, I think it posted late last Wednesday. And we have already 10 applicants who have completed and submitted applications. We have an additional, I believe, six or seven applicants who have started. We have received a lot of interest in the position and questions about that. We have posted the job vacancy in addition to the typical places that we would post Teach Iowa, where all of our positions are posted K-12 job spots. So some of our online opportunities, we have posted with AASA, the Association for School Administrators, the Association for School Personnel Administrators, so AASPA, the Minority Report. We did also advertise on SHRM, which is a corporate kind of a human resources opportunity, as well as with the, an upgrade to that. We used Des Moines, Greater Des Moines Partnership Handshake, which provided postings at Drake, UNFI, UNI, Grinnell, Simpson, Grandview, and then two additional universities that we are looking to create partnerships with. Langston and Lincoln, we've posted there as well, and as well as LinkedIn. So I wanted to make sure that we had a greater scope. We had also reached out to the Southern Law Poverty Center and our local NAACP. So those are just some of the places that we have already posted and are continuing to reach out. We are looking to interview during that last week of July and then hope to bring forward a name of our Executive Director of Equity Inclusion and Diversity at our August meeting, our first August meeting.
Carol, did you say that we could go to the website to find the description? Because I don't see it in our stuff for tonight's meeting anywhere. Is it still posted as a job?
Yes.
Okay, I'll just go there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, so Carol, I would, I'll look at it as well, but I'm wondering when we are looking at who's the interviewing for this position, that we have a diverse slate of interviewees as well, especially being what the role is, that we make sure that that's diverse as well.
Yep, we're very sensitive to that. Thank you. Yep.
Thank you, Dr. Side. There's no action to be taken there. So thank you. Next up on our agenda is our open forum. And this is a time at every board meeting when members of the public may speak to the board. Tonight, the board secretary will read comments submitted by email. Just a reminder to our community that due to COVID-19 and meeting restrictions, the public was asked to forward their comments to our board secretary at her email address by 4:00 PM on Monday today, July 13th. And so Peggy will be reading those comments. She will state the citizen's name and address for the public record and share up to five minutes of each individual person's comments. The board does reserve the right to limit the time allotted to a total of 30 minutes. We will be abiding by that guideline tonight, give or take five or 10 minutes. Also, please remember, just a reminder to those that submitted their comments, that they're making comments in a public meeting. So these comments are, if they should be considered defamatory in nature, the individual may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of the comments. Board members will listen to all comments, but they are not able to respond to them or take action on items that were not posted on the agenda. If the board feels that something commented on requires a response, they will refer to the district administration to respond to it at a later date. So Peggy, you're up for 30 minutes, give or take, okay?
Hey.
Carol, you'll time her when she gets to her five minutes, yeah? Each one? Okay, thank you.
This is Drew and Gina Lewis, 11556 Street, West Des Moines. My name is Gina Lewis, and I am the mother of four students in the West Des Moines School District, ages eight, 10, 11, and 13. I regularly served as a substitute teacher and support staff at West Ridge Elementary in all grades for the last two school years. In addition, I am a family physician. As I listened to the recent virtual town hall on Thursday night, I was struck by the daunting task of planning for this upcoming school year in light of COVID-19. Our family is so very grateful for the hours of time and commitment that has gone into the proposed plans. We realize that no one plan will satisfy every family, student, and staff member in the West Des Moines School District. But my concern is that the proposed Hybrid Two Plan is not the best plan for the majority of families. The CDC epidemiologists and infectious disease experts have put forth recommendations for phased reopening of the country. And in those areas of the country that have sped through or skipped phases, we are seeing resurgence of COVID-19 cases. My fear is that if we go to full school days, five days a week, without effectively limiting class sizes and requiring masks, we are setting ourselves up to fail. But more importantly, we are risking the health and safety of our children and our teachers. I realize that we don't have all of the answers yet on transmission of COVID from child to child and from child to adult. Because of that lack of knowledge and because of the devastation we've seen in areas where the spread of this illness has gone unchecked, I feel we need to err on the side of caution. As a mother, teacher, and doctor, I have firsthand knowledge of how easily illness spreads. Children just want to be with their friends. They don't have a natural tendency to stand six feet from others. They touch their faces. They touch everything. They put their hands in their mouths. They stand close to each other. They are terrible at washing hands, and they don't wear masks for seven hours a day. I've read a number of scientific articles on COVID-19. I've read recommendations from pediatricians who stress the importance of getting children back into the classroom for their emotional health as well as academic health. And I realize parents have to work and we need to get the economy going again. I want that for my children and our family too, but not at the risk of our physical health. I would propose that we set ourselves up for success by doing a phased reopening of school. By that, I mean starting back to school with the Hybrid AB Plan with required face masks for the first semester. If that is successful and our numbers remain stable without major resurgence, we could shift to full-time school for the second semester. That would initially allow for smaller class sizes, less time indoors with large groups of people, and time for everyone to get used to wearing masks and the extra handwashing measures, et cetera, that will be required to maintain safety. It will give the majority of students, families, and staff the opportunity to be in the classroom part-time. In addition, it will allow everyone to become more comfortable with online learning, which will most likely be necessary at some time during this school year as COVID-19 cases surge. These are not normal times. No one wants to keep their kids home and isolate their family from others. And this is a logistical nightmare to coordinate schedules and buses and cleaning schools while trying to accommodate everyone. But we are in the middle of a worldwide pandemic, and we don't have the luxury of rushing through this process and hoping for the best. I'm not willing to risk the health and safety of my own children or other children and teachers in the West Des Moines School District. Thank you so much for your time and consideration of my concerns. Please know that our family is so grateful for all of the time, energy, and hard work that has gone into this process. Please be well.
And next Common Tenille Hamilton and family, 12056 Street, West Des Moines, Iowa.
My name is Tenille Hamilton. I am the mother of three students enrolled in West Des Moines Schools, two daughters that attend West Ridge Elementary, second and third grade, and my oldest daughter will be a seventh grader this year at Indian Hills. When the district made the announcement on Friday to propose the Hybrid Option Two Plan, my heart sank. I am appreciative of the time and effort spent by the superintendent and staff who worked on the different proposals for what school will look like in the fall. I know everyone is making tough decisions at all levels, and it's definitely a conundrum, no matter how you slice it. I'm aware that whatever plan gets approved, you are unlikely to be able to please everyone. It is true, Hybrid Option Two allows parents' choice. I don't feel, however, that it is that cut and dry. I hear the people that say, if you're scared, then stay home. Please hear me too, and recognize that an all-or-nothing option is a hard decision for parents to make. I was on the Return to Learn Virtual Town Hall call Thursday night when Dr. Ramey talked about not only the physical health and well-being of students, but also the social and emotional well-being of students. If parents are given the opportunity to choose between online-only learning or in-class face-to-face-only learning, then I feel like the district is asking parents to choose between either the physical health or social-emotional health of our families. It would be amazing if we had a plan allowing for more buildings with more space and more teachers to spread everyone out and to help accommodate all working parents. Unfortunately, that's not a realistic plan. So please reconsider the AB approach, which allows for some additional level of safety, both for students and teachers with smaller class sizes, more limited time in the building, and the requirement of masks to further ensure the safety of students and staff. Please don't make parents have to choose between the physical and emotional well-being of their children. For families needing the all-day online option due to health risks or other concerns, please let this still be an option for them too. Being a stay-at-home mom, I realize AB may not be ideal for working families, but having the phased-in approach of AB might actually be more sustainable for keeping kids in school longer. In addition, it would give staff more experience with the online learning that will undoubtedly occur during the winter months as cases arise within the buildings. There is nothing typical about the situation that we find ourselves in today. We are in the midst of a pandemic. Our children were taken out of school before we even had any cases reported in our city. We have no idea how rapidly COVID-19 will spread once we go back to an all-in environment, or how many people it will affect, even beyond the boundaries of our school. This is why I implore you not to rush back into living our normal lives, per se, but to take it slow. Ease in with the AB model option and online model option and see how that goes for a semester. AB is not perfect, but at least it gives some additional level of distancing and safety, along with providing some normalcy for more people. I'm just one voice, but I feel there are many others out there that agree with me. Thank you for listening, and thank you for your time and consideration.
Next is Carrie Kennedy, 4804 Elm Street, West Des Moines. I am a mother to a kindergartner and second grader who are enrolled at Western Hills. I am also a physician working in a hospital and clinic during this time of the COVID-19 pandemic and take the CDC recommendations and social distancing recommendations very seriously. I know the fear and anxiety that I and many of my peers felt walking into the hospital in March when we first had COVID-19 patients, and we are trained medical professionals who have very strict recommendations. Can't enter the building without temp check. Everyone has masks, no visitors, et cetera. I can't imagine how worried the teachers and staff are with so many unknowns or inexperience in dealing with infectious disease. Even at 50% capacity or less, I have serious concerns about students and teachers being in the classrooms. The only way I would even consider sending my children is if there was 50% capacity or less, which is why I voted for Hybrid Option One. When I did the survey, Hybrid Option Two was not listed. I understand the Hybrid Option Two is essentially for the families who wanted in-person learning, 46%, and at-home, 18%. So that does cover the majority. It is ironic that the people who voted for the Hybrid Option are the only ones not getting what they wanted, even though it will likely be the Hybrid Option that will be adopted, just not the one that was presented and voted on in the survey. It seems like the Des Moines School District is going to do a Hybrid Option similar to Option One that was presented in West Des Moines. If the largest school district in Iowa is able to do that, I don't see why West Des Moines can't make that work. We very much desire our children to have in-person learning, because I don't think the at-home learning will be comparable. I'm not against the kids being in the classroom. I've even signed my kindergartner up for camp kindergarten, but only because the numbers for that class are 10 to 15 children. I also don't see how you expect some parents to make a decision about sending their kids to school unless you can tell them how many kids will be in the classroom. If we decide to do the Hybrid Option and get to the classroom and it's full, and there are no precautions taken, I can guarantee that we will be switching to the at-home option. I also noticed that the majority of teachers prefer the Hybrid Model One, 50%, and I don't blame them. Only 29% were comfortable with Hybrid Option Two. I would not want to teach a classroom that has large amount of students and more contact time. If you are listening to your teachers, it seems like Hybrid Option Number One is the best. And frankly, without the teachers being on board and safe, none of these options will work. 70% of your staff is uncomfortable with the return to learn that has been selected, it may be a setup for failure. Our next is from Jason Detbarn, 1252 South 46th Street, West Des Moines. I support West Des Moines school leaders that have recommended Hybrid Option Two to the school board. This plan allows parents the right to choose if they want their children to learn online or have the option to return to in-person instruction. I feel strongly that my children should be in school based on the lower risk of coronavirus transmission and infection to people under 18. I also believe keeping children isolated at home comes with many other risks. The parent survey also supported this opinion, excuse me, with a majority of parents wanting their kids in school. Parents that are uncomfortable sending their children to school have the option to participate in online earning only. Thank you for supporting Option Two, which gives parents a choice as to what they feel is best for their children. Vote yes to Hybrid Options. And this is from Maria Cervantes, 5604 Northview Place, West Des Moines. We have been closely following the resolution and recommendation of the district concerning the education model for the next school year. We are very happy that the district selected an option where they would give us a choice for online learning. We are concerned because we believe there is no way to guarantee 100% safe environment. My husband is a geneticist scientist in molecular biology, was in the team of the Human Genome Project and has studies in medicine. Therefore, we follow research papers and discoveries, and we are very informed and have full understanding of this virus. It has been working from home since March 13th, 99% of the time. We have additional reasons to select online learning. We are immigrants, and we have nobody to help us if any of us get sick. Also, our children suffer from asthma besides other health issues, and we have my mother living with us. She has chronic lymphocytic leukemia. If possible, please have online learning for the district. We believe that is the safest for the community. We think that just as in our family has complex health issues, many teachers are also in similar situations. I've worked in education for many years and have seen many students come to school very sick. Some parents simply don't care and send their children to school with fevers, bronchitis, and flu. Please don't trust that parents will take the temperatures every morning of their children, nor that they will keep the children at home if they are ill. Please grant us the choice of online learning for our children during this school year. And this is from the WDMEA co-presidents, Chantel Carnes, 2116 Ashworth Road, West Des Moines, and Sarah Beth Weinberg, 3931 Commerce Drive, West Des Moines. We are currently serving as co-presidents of the West Des Moines Education Association. As this is a decision that greatly impacts our members, we feel it is important to add our voices to the discussion. We recognize that this is an emotional time. Things are changing rapidly, and we are in unfamiliar territory. We are all in a situation where we must make potentially life-altering decisions with lots of factors still unknown or undetermined. We are being asked to be comfortable with the uncomfortable. The safety of our staff, students, and families are a top priority in decision-making. As a community, we are all in this together. Ideally, we would encourage the board to wait before selecting one return-to-learn plan. As quickly as things are changing, we can't know which plan will be appropriate in six weeks. We do recognize that whatever decision is made tonight, there will be individuals happy with the decision and individuals that are also unhappy with the decision. We at WDMEA want to encourage the board to keep our students and staff's safety and health at the forefront of any decision-making. It's easy to get swept in the political rhetoric of the current climate. But we ask that the board remember that our first concern should be what is best for our students, our staff, and our community. If and when face-to-face instruction resumes, mitigation strategies should be a key component of any plan. This includes requiring masks for students and staff, providing sneeze guards and other barriers, and increasing opportunities for handwashing and disinfecting. Teachers want to be with their students, but being face-to-face will be even more challenging this year. We recognize that these plans involve many moving pieces, and it is a challenge to turn a big ship. With this in mind, we think it is important that the district engage in continual conversations with stakeholders in order to address concerns efficiently and revise plans and protocols as needed. Collaboration, flexibility, and cooperation are more important than ever. We are all in this boat together. The best and only way we can get through these challenging times is to work as a team. Me again. We will continue to address the needs of the challenging times and get through this together. This next is Erin and Dustin Hawkman, 2410 Ashworth Road, West Des Moines. Good evening, school board members. First of all, thank you for your service on the West Des Moines Community School Board. We know it's a lot of work during normal times, and these are certainly not normal times. We are concerned, parents, of an incoming kindergarten student. High-quality education for our kids is extremely important to us. Even more important than that is their health and safety. At this point in the pandemic, we know the best way to keep ourselves and our kids safe is to practice social distancing, regular handwashing, frequent cleaning and disinfecting, and wearing a mask or face covering, especially when you can't maintain six feet or more from others. Based on the information West Des Moines Community Schools has shared online and in the town hall meeting, we are extremely disappointed with the recommendation staff has made to the board to approve Hybrid Option Two. We do not believe there are even close to enough mitigation efforts in place to safely return a majority of students to in-person learning full-time. We also do not believe an entirely online option is best, particularly for elementary-age students. As a result, we are asking the board to strongly consider Hybrid Option One. This will allow for social distancing in the classroom and would minimize the number of students in the buildings each day. It will also ensure most students have the opportunity to connect with their It will also ensure most students have the opportunity to connect with their teacher in person two days a week. In addition, we would like to see the district conduct temperature checks of all students at the start of each day. It is not realistic to expect all parents will do this, and this also assumes that all families have access to a thermometer in their home. If possible, increasing air circulation in the buildings would also help prevent the spread of COVID-nineteen. Finally, I'm not clear on how the district will handle when a student or staff member tests positive. If a student or staff member in my child's school tests positive, I expect to be notified. I would also expect the building to be closed for however long it takes to do a full, deep cleaning. I know we're asking much more of our teachers and administrators this year than ever before in my lifetime and without any additional funding that I'm aware of. We know there is no perfect solution. We know online learning is not a substitute for the in-person learning and socialization that needs to occur. Our children's lives are worth the extra work. As a result, schools should implement the most mitigation efforts, not the least. With most schools in the country closed since March, we really don't know the extent to which children could be impacted by COVID-nineteen. I would prefer not to find out. I don't know of any business that would even consider having twenty-plus people spend an entire day in a room together. If you aren't willing to meet in person for an hour or two as a board, why would we even consider a plan that returns a majority of students to in-person learning at the same time? This shouldn't even be an option. Social distancing, temperature checks, mask-wearing must be in place to protect the health and safety of our children and the teachers and associates who will be risking their lives to educate them. This community member sent in two short emails to be read. I'm just gonna read them both together. This is Nicole Amell, one-six-zero-eight South Forty-third Street, West Des Moines. I would like to thank the West Des Moines School District for allowing parents to choose either sending kids to school or online learning and implore the board to approve this option. I have a fifth grader and a first grader who are at vastly different stages of learning. And while online could work for the fifth grader, it without hesitation will not work for the first grader, who was cut short on his learning in kindergarten. Learning to read and write is paramount at his age and only in-person learning will suffice. If in-person learning is not an option for my first grader, I will have to move him to a private school. So I hope that you approve the hybrid option two plan that the West Des Moines Community School District recommended. It has come to my attention that parents wishing to have online-only learning have made an email push to this board to reject hybrid option two. This meddling is absurd and the board must ensure these emails are merit-based because these parents are being given a choice and have the exact result they want by choosing online learning. Other than the teachers' unions being behind this email push, the only other explanation for this, these emails is to remove the right to choose from the parents that would like to have their kids in a classroom setting. The school district claims it went to extreme lengths to get the safest and best options for teachers, parents, and children, and recommended hybrid option two where parents choose. Any rejection of hybrid option two by the board in favor of online learning would be discriminatory, favoring online-only parents over in-class parents. I would like to remind the board that each parent has an equal vote on Election Day. Next is from Jackie Giltner, three-four-two-four Valley View Drive, West Des Moines.
Peggy?
Yes.
I apologize for the interruption. President Cox, would you want to continue? We are at our thirty minutes.
How many more do you have, Peggy?
I have six more.
Let's go another fifteen minutes, okay?
Thank you.
I'm a short. This is Jackie Giltner, three-four-two-four Valley View Drive, West Des Moines. Des Moines Public Schools have taken stance requiring students to wear masks during their hybrid learning plan. It would be nice if West Des Moines Community Schools would make a similar statement for the safety of all students and staff. Recommendations do not hold much weight. And the next is Claire Theobald, five-three-three-three Woodland Avenue, West Des Moines. My name is Claire Theobald. I have a son, Carter, that just finished up kindergarten at Westridge. We have been nothing but happy with the school over the course of our first year there. However, I want to state that I am highly disappointed with the options we are being given for a return-to-learn plan for this coming school year. I do not think this was responsibly thought out with the best interest of the children and teachers in mind. I find it funny that this meeting is being held virtually, but our students and staff are being expected to return to school full-time. Safety of our teachers and students is at stake despite the measures being taken to clean, social distance, wear masks, et cetera. Masks are very unrealistic for young children. Most of us adults are uncomfortable wearing them for an hour at a time to run to a store. How can we expect children and teachers to don these all day, five days a week? We also do not know the impact the virus will have on the children. Yes, the infection rate for children is very low, but they haven't had hardly any exposure to the world outside their homes since this all first began. We are majorly jumping the gun, going straight from quarantine and social distancing directly into returning to school and being around large groups of people full-time. I cannot stress the emotional impact this is going to have on the kids as well. Any sense of normalcy at school is going to be missing. Their mental health is going to be impacted with added unnecessary stresses and fear. We have yet to hear how the school will be handling lunch, recess, special classes, et cetera. We cannot expect the kids to sit in the same classroom environment for an entire day without it making a negative impact on them. In addition, this does not seem like a reasonable plan for teachers. Are they expected to do double duty and teach kids in person all five days a week as well as come up with online curriculum for those who choose a virtual route? Not only is their health at risk, maybe even more so than the kids returning full-time, but their mental health and stress levels of having to work overtime. What happens if a teacher tests positive for COVID and is out for weeks? How are sub-plans going to be created for that length of time? If anyone tests positive, will the school shut down for weeks and everyone be expected to do virtual learning anyway? I hope you will reconsider the options. I think starting the school year all virtually, or at least easing back with two days a week, seems like a much safer plan until we get a feel of how everyone will be impacted coming back together. I know you will not be able to make everyone happy, but I think the safety of our students and staff need to come first, convenience and needing to return to normalcy. Thank you for your consideration. This is Nicole and Joel Campbell, one-two-four-one Tulip Tree Lane, West Des Moines, Iowa. My name is Nicole Campbell. I have a daughter who completed kindergarten with Ms. Thompson last year, as well as a stepdaughter who completed second grade with Mrs. Hobson. My husband Joel helped me write this letter as well. We have loved being a part of Westridge and there couldn't be two little girls more upset about school being canceled last spring. This speaks volumes to how much work and effort the district and the school puts into their education and their investment into our children. We were so disappointed to hear the recommendation going to the school board was one that parents didn't even have the opportunity to vote on. This plan was one of the least comfortable options that teachers voted on. I understand that is being viewed as the best viable compromise accommodating kids at home and kids at school. But with the same amount and less, and likely less staff this year with additional protocols, cleaning, and other stressors, I just don't see how this will be accomplished. I know no solution will make everyone happy, but this seems like it will make everyone unhappy. Parents that just want their kids to go back to school don't seem, from my humble perspective, to be practicing social distancing or wearing masks, which is absolutely their personal choice to make. This whole situation has been made so political. It hurts my heart to watch that behavior trickle down to kids to the point they are forced to worry about that this upcoming year. This should be about coming together for a solution, protecting our neighbors, looking out for our friends, and setting a positive example for our kids. Politics does not have a place in this decision. The districts had, the district has had limits in place for graduation, virtual town halls and Zoom meetings with cases on the rise in Iowa. These situations like school do not allow for social distancing. So different plans, virtual accommodations, people simply not being able to attend have been the solutions. I'm struggling to understand why we are not taking that approach for this fall in regards to school. I don't feel like I have enough information at this point to make a decision, let alone an educated decision. If a kid comes down with COVID, is their entire class then sent home to quarantine? Is the entire school shut down? How are classes interacting with each other? Will those kids be sent home as well? What about staff that came in contact? How are you handling lunch, recess? How are kids expected to wear masks during these activities? How will mask usage be monitored and enforced? I can only imagine how many kids are going to show up with medically exempt mask cards. How does the district expect to accomplish any kind of social distancing when a school is already overpopulated? Are you just hoping enough kids stay home to accomplish that? What about the library, STEM, choir, art, band? We are working on a plan. It's not enough information for us to even make an educated decision. We fully respect that you are doing your best and there is no winning here, but we don't even have enough answers to make a decision. Last spring, schools were closed without a single case in Iowa. We, as a state, have over eight hundred deaths, still limited. Frustrating, inaccurate testing, no reliable antibody testing, and we are willing to just throw all of the kids back like normal and think they will all keep on masks. We have seen the effect in several states of reopening too quickly. Why are we not heating and opening slowly? Aren't we supposed to learn from our previous mistakes and the mistakes of others? My greatest fear in all of this is that kids don't seem as susceptible because they just haven't been exposed. Their school, sports, activities, play dates were all canceled. They have just been home. We don't have information on them all being back together and being exposed. And I, for one, do not want to see our kids be test subjects. I keep hearing mental health and kids needing to socialize as a reason to go back, and I couldn't agree more. As the mom of a first grader, I know we can academically catch up on anything we miss out on this year. Her mental well-being is more of a concern for me. But I don't know that sitting in a classroom, no recess, limited specials, rearranged imagined P E, if there is P E at all, is also not good for her emotional and mental health. And what happens if the virus spreads through the school and it shuts down again? That will be incredibly tough on them as well. I'm incredibly concerned for the well-being of the teachers, staff, officers, nurse, and parents who have heavy roles in schools. The stress on the teachers for accommodating online and in-person without parent help in the classrooms. Limited or canceled specials and physical activity for kids five days a week would be daunting for me as a teacher. There was an outpouring of support for teachers and educators at the start of all this. A get-back-in-the-classroom-full-time attitude that has come out recently is just defeating to those same teachers. This isn't to mention those with families with health risks or even wanting to be exposed. Essential workers all got hazard pay, paid time off if they are family members. How are you planning to support teachers this upcoming year? I would implore you to reconsider the A B option. The strain on the teachers is so much less. It seems to be a lot more sustainable of an option to actually last the semester with kids only in two days a week. I think getting them to follow social distancing and wearing masks is a lot more realistic. It also gives them some semblance of normalcy and limits the risk of having so many kids in one place. It sounds like about eighty-five percent of the kids would be able to attend if this is the case. It's a smaller step, not a leap, as it should be. We are both working parents and we are fortunate enough to be able to work remote for the most part. But I understand that not every household has that option. The school is not a babysitter system. This is about our kids' education and mental stability. Let's come together as a district and figure out a solution for full-time working parents. To me, there are more options than just what was presented. You have five elementaries. Why are you putting the same solution?
Peggy, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Peggy. I think we might have exceeded the five minutes for this person.
We did.
Carol's so kind. She doesn't want to.
I was thinking it was coming to a close. I thought, okay, but it.
There is a few more paragraphs.
So their full comments will be embedded into the minutes.
Correct. And all of the.
Thank you. All of them will.
Submitted will be part included in the minutes.
Peggy, did you read them in the order in which they were received?
I did.
Okay. And are we at the end of our extended time, Carol?
We have less than five minutes left.
Okay. If you want to move on to the next one, we'll go the last few minutes here.
The next one is Jordi Doty, eighty-one eighty-one Forty-Fifth Lane, Coming. Public education is about choices. Give West Des Moines parents the right to choose whether their student goes back to school full-time or practices online education from their home. We, as parents, need that option. If teachers do not feel comfortable in the classroom, have them teach the online population from their home or have them Zoom into live classrooms where children can still get their full school experience. We know that children suffer a great deal without community educators and routine. Not returning to school in full face-to-face interactions every day will only continue to place more stress on our children and their parents. Almost every parent of a West Des Moines student has a full-time job, whether that be done in or out of the home. If that job is fulfilled in the home, being able to provide the adequate attention to their child and job duty simultaneously is impossible. And leaves both the child, the child's education, and the duties of the career unfulfilled. If that job is fulfilled outside of the home, then the parent is completely at a loss for how to make sure their child receives adequate daycare that will support schooling. Thus also requiring them to hire, pay someone to watch their child or lose out on working that day. Just because West Des Moines does not have a large percentage of at-risk students does not mean that their mental health isn't suffering from lack of community contact and routine. Public schools are for stability, structure, and safety for all children. Lockdown was put into motion to slow the amount of people needing access to hospitals, not to wait around until there was a cure for something that has a ninety-nine-point-nine-eight survival rate, yet puts more children at risk educationally, physically, and mentally. We urge West Des Moines to return to school full-time for our families to continue to thrive as a community. And are we at the end of our time?
We actually are.
Thank you, Peggy. So just.
As I said, everything will be posted on the minutes.
Thank you, Peggy. I'm sorry for those that we were not able to get to, but I'm glad we were able to go a few extra minutes tonight. We're gonna move on now to item number five, the consent agendas or a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved, Jen?
Second, Vicky.
Thank you. There's been a motion by Jen and a second by Vicky. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of comments, Liz. Under the consent agenda, there's an E A P S A P agreement. And at the F and F Committee, we wanted to make sure that everyone knew that the agreement itself has not changed, which is why we left it in the consent agreement. However, the amount of payment did go up. The contract is for more money. So previously, it was two dollars and fifty cents a student, and that's gone up to three dollars and fifty cents a student. However, there's been no change in. However, there's been no change in cost for employees. So we want to make sure that everyone knew that. And then also, if you would just please note that item number two, the National SAM Innovation Project Contract is being moved to the August tenth agenda. That will not be part of the consent agreement tonight.
Thank you, Liz. Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Uh, next we've got the superintendent's report. Dr. Ramey, you've got a couple of things to announce.
Yeah, just a couple of items, a short report. Really, my, my work-life has been around return to learn, so. Um, but just a couple of things. I want to thank the board. Thank Liz for supporting me in running for two different positions. So the SAI Executive Committee position as well as the AASA Governing Board. And happy to report, as you see in my written report, that I was elected by my peers to serve in both of those capacities. And for the AASA Governing Board, we've already had our first task. So we were in a virtual setting, but advocating at the federal level for a variety of topics already last week. So several of us met with our senators and representatives to advocate for a second round of CARES funding for schools. Also to advocated for the extension of the waivers for nutrition and then really to even consider the universal meals for all students. So that would make it a lot easier. And I appreciated Director Di helping me with that information. Uh, we also advocated around the expansion of broadband and how important that is, especially in how highlighted it's been for that equity piece in our, in COVID now, where we have areas even in our community where, where kids and families weren't connected and how we needed to respond quickly to that. And then also there was conversation around liability and having that liability protection for schools as well as what they've done for businesses. So that was really our conversation last week with those who represent us. And then, um, just so you know, I was contacted by Al Hunt, who is a Washington journalist, and James Carville. And so I will be a special guest, I guess, an interesting guest is what he called it, Wednesday for a podcast all around COVID nineteen and reopening schools. So that will be Wednesday at eleven fifteen our time. So that's my report for, for now.
Thank you, Dr. Ramey. Um, do you, are you, is that when you're recording it or is that when it's airing? Is it a live? It's, it's recorded, your podcast?
Well, that's a great question. I believe that that is a live podcast based on what he sent me in the email, so.
Okay, terrific. Yeah, Peggy's on her head. Okay. If you please send us that information, I'd love to listen. Are there any questions for Dr. Ramey? Uh, congratulations and condolences at the same time for those leadership positions in both of those organizations. Great opportunity for our district and for you. Okay, uh, next we have board members reports. We'll start with committee reports. I think the only committee we have is FNF. So Jeff or Liz, do you have something or Jill? I don't know who's reporting for you.
We just had the concerns on the consent agreement, but I don't know that there was really anything else that we covered. We went into great depth on the ten-year plan and all of the building projects. And so we just, that was the majority of our meeting.
And we'll have comments during. Yeah, we'll have comments about that during that part of the agenda. But other than that, Liz, remember to do the other one. So thank you. I would have forgotten.
Absolutely.
Okay, are there any other committee reports at this time? Okay, then we'll do individual board members reports. So we'll start with Lonnie Daphne.
Awesome. Thank you. And I just wanted to say thank you for the admin and Valley's staff and volunteers for a great graduation ceremony that was facilitated, attended two of the three, and very well done. Lots of parents stopping afterwards, again, saying thank you for doing so. So appreciate that being facilitated, especially amongst all that's going on for those families and those seniors. Um, and I too just want to say thank you to admin and return to learn team for being fluid and open to doing things different. And, you know, obviously things can change at any given time. So just saying out loud, appreciate and, and thanks for that. And then lastly, I would be interested to know more on the equity, the executive director position. In reading the job description, of course, and having it posted, and we're filling it fast and furious, just want to make sure that voices from a diverse perspective are heard and included in this because this role is really important to the district. So, um, I know we've consulted with outside people, but I think we need to make sure we consult with inside people as well, i.e. our diverse students, families, staff, et cetera, so that this role is set up for success. So just want to say that as well. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Okay, thanks, Lonnie. Jeff Hicks.
Jeff, for the sake of time, I just want to thank everyone that submitted emails over the last several days, getting their questions and concerns and thoughts were really helpful. So appreciate it.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Vicky Poole.
Um, I too am very appreciative of all of the emails and phone calls, et cetera, that I have received. You know, our district has been, and I've been in a lot of districts, but it is at the pinnacle of taking input from everyone. I've never seen a district like it, and I believe that we have bent over backwards to provide opportunity for everyone to have voice. Of course, we know not everyone is going to be happy. And I'm going to remind some of you, as some of you already know, when I first became principal of Valley High School, I was given a coffee mug. And on that coffee mug were two doors. And there was a devil looking at the two doors and saying, pick one. And on one door, it said, damned if you do. And on the other door, it said, damned if you don't. And certainly as we make decisions in education, we are going to please a lot of people. And we are going to be not on everybody's happy list as we make decisions. It's just tough, tough. And, you know, no one is more passionate about children than we are. No one is more passionate about educators than we are. So please know, as we go through these trying times, that we value everyone's opinion. We have to weigh it and, and move forward with the, the best decision that we're able to make. I'd also like to comment about the commencement exercises. And Josh, who organized it all, did everything to the nth degree. I would sing his praises from the highest mountain. It was right down to seven second intervals of names being called. It couldn't have been done any better. So kudos to him and anyone who helped out. I think the football team put up chairs. Everybody was on board to provide a wonderful experience for our graduates. And interestingly enough, with an hour delay, it made no difference in anything. We were still able to pull it off with a great deal, deal of class. And the graduates that I talked to thoroughly enjoyed it, and it was just a wonderful time had by all. So thank you.
And your dream come true, having graduation at the stadium.
Yeah, you know, that's right. Back to that. I would really, really, really like to see us consider that for the future. I think our experience with the rain, rain delay taught us that, yeah, we can pull it off even if there is a little bit of bad weather. And certainly what a wonderful venue to have. I think the kids liked it as well as parents, and it was just a spectacular day. I didn't have a graduate, but it was a spectacular day anyway. Thank you. So let's not, let's not get rid of that thought.
Uh, Liz Brennan.
Well, one of, uh, one of the good things about being later in your list of being called on for board reports, I can just say ditto. I enjoyed graduation and I truly appreciate everyone that reached out to the board with all of their comments for what we're talking about tonight. And so thank you to the staff. Thank you to parents and students that contacted us.
Uh, Jen Uliwels.
Yeah, I would ditto Liz's ditto. You know, graduation, I got to go to all three. They were tremendous. And absolutely always thank you to everybody that reaches out to us. We really do value that, that voice. But I also want to say to our staff and our admin, you know, Dr. Ramey and team, we know and we see and we appreciate that you have been working literally around the clock, countless hours for months now, creating something that was not on our strategic plan in January. We didn't see this coming. And I just appreciate from top to bottom, our staff, our teachers, our support staff, your ability to pivot, especially knowing as we head into fall. You know, right now we think this is hard, choosing a plan. It's going to get tough. And it's going to be tough because it's unknown. And so I just really appreciate the grace, the patience, and the flexibility of our entire educational community.
Who's next on the line? Jill Johnson.
Thanks. Um, obviously, maybe me above everybody else had a different perspective of graduation. Like, not that it was bad at all. It was fabulous. But as a parent, I kind of was able to take it on as not just a board member, but as a parent. And so I really want to say thank you for making that happen. Obviously, I have a lot that are, and I know a lot of people in that senior class, and the feedback has been universally positive. And I think people really acknowledged that it took a lot of effort, but it was appreciated. Um, and so thanks for trying to make that special, especially when that class had so many things taken from them. Spring sports, the end of their year, and so many other things. So it was really nice to have that salvage. So appreciate all the extra work that went into that. As far as like making tough decisions, I do appreciate all the comments we've had. And, you know, it's been really challenging. I think, um, sometimes I'm surprised by the language that maybe has been used towards the board by some of our community members. Um, and I think it's just a good reminder that we're all really doing the best we can. We're not making decisions thoughtlessly. We're not trying to injure anybody, myself and some other board members. We have kids that are in this district, and we're going to have to make the same decisions about the safety of our kids as we go back. Many of us work in education, are going to have to make some of the same decisions that our teachers are facing. I know I work at Drake. We'll be wearing face masks. We're back to face-to-face. I have no idea what my fall schedule will look like for teaching. So I do understand the stress and anxiety that all this uncertainty creates. And I think that just is a good reminder, have a little grace with everybody, um, and that everybody responds to things differently and that we're all just stressed out, really. It's, we've never been through this before. So just remember, at the end of the day, people are making decisions with really good in their heart to really make the best decision they think they can with the information we have. And when that switches in two weeks, four weeks, six weeks, eight weeks, or whenever that might happen, we'll all go with it again, and it will create some stress. But together, as long as we come together and continue to dialogue, we'll be able to, to get through it as a community.
Thanks, Jill. Uh, I echo the Valley High School graduation experience and wanted to commend not only the staff, but also the families. It took a lot of cooperation from our students and our families in order to do graduation the way that we did. And I honestly just wasn't quite sure, like, how many families are really going to be down for that plan? And how many empty chairs might we have in the stadium? And we did not have that many. Uh, I thought it was a really great example of what can happen when we work together in really difficult circumstances. So thank you very much to our families and our students. And it was a pleasure to get to stand on stage as each of them received, I'm going to air quote, received their diplomas. Uh, I know that Mr. Maxwell and his staff spent a lot of time coordinating and planning. I also wanted to commend our staff for the real seamless experience in our town hall last weekend. I know we had several board members participating, some of them on panel and some of them not. So, uh, thank you so much for your work in putting that together, Dr. Ramey and your team. You know, all of you, Michelle Lettington, all of you, you all answered those really hard questions with a lot of compassion, and it was clear in your voice and in your, that the depth that you went to in answering those questions, I, you know, you do care and that you have thought about it. Um, and I think people felt assured by that information. And I know there were gobs and gobs of questions that we weren't able to get to. So thank you to Lane and the whole team that put those FAQ answers together online for the ones that we weren't able to answer live. That was no small undertaking. We thought that we had, you know, really upped our capacity when we, you know, increased our Zoom account to a thousand people. And then 10 minutes in, it was close to anybody that wanted to jump on because we were over a thousand people. What a wonderful demonstration of community partnership it is when we've got a thousand people that want to spend an hour and a half on a Zoom call with us. I think that really just shows dedication of our community as well, not only our families, but also our staff. So, uh, we now have increased our Zoom membership to three thousand. So, uh, kind of the sky's the limit, and if we capacity that, we'll, we'll make it even bigger. Tomorrow, I will be recording my part of the Walnut Creek graduation. They have decided to go with a different plan than what Valley did. And it's kind of my honor and my pleasure to get to record that speech. So they will not be meeting in live and live for their graduation. And when that graduation is fully recorded, it'll be shared with all of you as board members. And I would encourage you to help celebrate Walnut Creek when that becomes available and take a minute to watch it. As you know, we get some really inspirational speeches in those graduations. I wanted to just also share with board members that it is our expectation to return to the Learning Resource Center for our board meetings beginning in August. So just kind of plan accordingly for that. We'll want you to wear your mask and we'll have, you know, accommodations to socially distance as best we can while we're in the room. But we'll be doing workshop and board meeting in person beginning in August. Another outside-the-box announcement, some of you may know that last week, or maybe a week and a half ago, the governor made an announcement that she was taking some CARES dollars and appropriating them for mental health supports. Those are being distributed ten million dollars to mental health providers and then thirty million dollars to the mental health regions. I, being a region mental health CEO, have been part of those conversations of how might we think about spending the thirty million dollars? And what we know from COVID is that the adult mental health system was not really that impacted. I mean, certainly people were challenged to meet with their providers face-to-face, but telemedicine was put into place. Some other, um, you know, kind of person-to-person supports were set aside. But by and large, the adult system was pretty stable. What wasn't stable and isn't stable is the children's system. And I think it's really important that we talk about that, that there are children in our district that have experienced extreme trauma and stress in their seclusion of learning from home. And we in the school community play a really important role in student health and safety. And there are likely to be some students who are going to return to our district, and they're going to say something to somebody in our school system, somebody that they trust, whether it's a lunch staff person, a bus driver, a secretary, a homeroom teacher, the PE teacher, they're going to say something. And I really encourage our staff in the few weeks that we have left before school starts to take a minute and familiarize yourself with trauma-informed practices. Jen Uliwels has got a whole bunch of trainings going on right now to support that. But we really want to make sure our staff are aware of the language that students might use in sharing their own traumas and the impact that it's had on them. And we want to make sure that we are aware of what those words might be. They're not going to be the words that adults might use, of course. But we also want to make sure that our staff know what to do with those words, how to respond. I also want to make sure that we're aware that these traumatic experiences are not unique to children, that also staff in our district will have. that also staff in our district will have experienced some trauma over the last several months since we've all been learning and working remotely. And I want us to be very sensitive to that as well. So as we think about how we might spend those $30 million, we're working really closely with the AEA to determine what supports might help districts to be more ready to understand those conversations that might have with students and and how to refer them to supports and what supports might need to be necessary within a school building to meet the needs of the students and the staff. I think we all have a understanding that there's quite a bit of anxiety in our community just tonight in our return to learn plan. You know, nobody's comfortable with what's happening. We don't have all the answers. And that anxiety is real and we can feel it. It's going to show up in our classrooms. And the more we can do to prepare ourselves to support one another through those first few weeks, the better. So if there are thoughts, suggestions, and ideas on how to spend some of that money, you know, please don't hesitate to share them with me and I will pass them on as appropriate. Okay, so that concludes my report.
This is Lisa. Can I just jump in and just remind board members that Valley also had a virtual ceremony? I would have to ask Lane if that link has been sent so that you guys could watch that one as well.
Yeah, I received it as a parent. It was very well done.
Yes. Yes. And and that Walnut Creek is also going to have an in-person opportunity where individual families are able to walk in safely and watch their student across the stage. So two very unique experiences, but very, very well thought out by by both building administrators and teams. And so I know that they're looking forward to that event as well.
Yeah, super cool that their whole family group, whatever that is, gets to come into the to the Performing Arts Center and cheer on their students when their name is called. It's pretty neat. I really commend Walnut Creek for that creative thinking. Okay, so next up on the agenda, item number eight are legislative priorities for the 2021 legislative session. So is there a motion to approve the 2021 legislative priorities?
So moved.
And I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, Lonnie. Motion by Lonnie, second by Liz. All those, is there any discussion?
I'd just like to thank everyone for submitting their their ideas. It made it a very easy process this year.
We're all in agreement, too. It was a pretty easy process.
Yeah.
Great. Is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. Item number nine, our return to learn plan. Is there a motion to approve the return to learn plan?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, there's a motion by Joe and a second by Liz. Is there any discussion?
I would make one one comment. Again, I thank everyone. I think we all have thanked everyone for all of the phone calls and the emails and everything. And interesting to note, which I didn't say before, mine ran, as I'm sure everybody else's did, the entire 180 degrees. It went from this is the best thing since sliced bread to we won't vote for you anymore if this is what you choose. So just a wide variety of of comments. So if I said that it was leaning one way, that would be wrong with what I got.
President Liz, is it possible, Lonnie had asked a question about demographics. And, you know, with having Mike on board, we have that information that we could share now if that's possible, that he could share his screen.
Sure. And I think Lonnie and Liz and Jeff may have also had other questions. So why don't we start with Mike answering some of those and then we'll let the other board members have their turn. Are you?
I'm going to share my screen here.
Okay, thank you.
To start with, a number of teachers was 653, 77.9% of the staff responding. Was there another staff question?
I don't think so. I think it was the demographics on the parent survey.
Then on the parent survey, one of the things that was interesting, we noticed the results that you saw earlier were directly from, you know, kind of the canned survey responses. And because we have parents that have children in more than one building, what you were seeing was was it was just the way that the survey tool aggregated it. So when I broke it out as individual responses for each school, you can see here the number of responses and the percentage of those responses. So Stillwell was 8.16, not that huge percentage that we saw earlier. So it's actually a pretty similar percentage with the exception of Valley. And any questions about that? So the, and then the overall number of responses in the parent survey was 5650, around that. In terms of individual people, so families with more than one, it was actually just under 3,300 individuals. So a lot of those people answered the survey more than once for each one of their children or for each school that was involved. So I'm going to shift to the demographics now. And actually, this is.
Mike, excuse me, this is Michelle. I wonder if you go to present mode, if it'll make it a little bit larger to see.
How about that?
Thank you.
Yep. So that's the breakout by building. When we look at their answer to the question, sending my child every day a virtual format, that's the orange. And then the hybrid AB is the green. And that is the responses by school. And then if we break that out by the answer to the racial group, can you see my whole screen? You don't see the.
We can see the whole screen, Mike. It's good. Thank you.
So you can see there it's where that is broken out by by those groups. So this is the one on the, there's everyone, and then there's broken out by race ethnicity. There is a group that is preferred not to answer. And then other would be the Native American, Pacific Islander, the smaller groups there. And then this is actual count of responses by those same. So not looking at 100%, but of all the responses, we can see where those largest groups were in terms of count.
Thank you, Mike.
Yep. Any other questions about that? I apologize, we didn't have that broken out ahead of time, but as soon as you asked the question, I went ahead and added it.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Lonnie, what other questions did you have?
The only other question that I did have, some of them are answered, so thank you for that. But on the, we were talking about workforce. And right now, we have approximately 40 open positions. So I know we're talking about current staff right now and and safety and safeguards. What it, what are we doing as it relates to active hiring for those individuals coming into whatever plan they've decided to do?
For our teaching force, Lonnie, we would, we would be looking and working with our mentor coordinator along with our TLS directors and teacher leaders to be able to provide support for them and be able to help them understand each of our plans and what their responsibilities would be. We have our online learning coordinators who are continuing to provide opportunities throughout the summer even for our staff members. And we would be able to support them that way, in addition to the mentoring that would be able to occur throughout their their first two years of of teaching with us.
Talk a little bit about the number of days that we have for new staff prior to school starting as well.
So we have new staff that come in. They they're provided an orientation yet in the summer, even before they start with their contract, so that way they can have some of the logistics. They can be able to understand how their ID badge works. They get a get a laptop many times. They have their email address. So they begin to make those connections logistically even prior to starting. We have our new staff come in for four or five days earlier than our our returning staff so that we can provide intense opportunities for learning with our TLS folks. We have time that we talk about the, I'll call them nuts and bolts, or management of things like our handbook, our expectations, go over some of the policies, talk about opportunities that we have throughout our district for learning, as well as through AEA and some of our other benefits. So we provide that learning. In addition, we also have opportunity to have conversations and dialogue. So we even structure the lunches during that time to be able to be having professional dialogue together. Kind of set up those those opportunities for conversation that help to establish and and create an even stronger set of expectations around our priority six, our strategic plan, and then what does it look like in a classroom? How does that live out? So we we work together to provide those opportunities. Our mentor and induction coordinator works very closely with our TLS directors and staff to prepare that those learning opportunities. We also have a an opportunity during that time for our WDME leadership to share information with our new new staff. And so, yeah, we just have a host of of opportunities available for them during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Liz Brennan, did you have some questions?
There we go. And these are questions just kind of based on different people that have talked to me and some questions that they posed to me. And I wasn't exactly sure how to answer them. And Shane, you talked before about lab classes. And I am just wondering more about like choir, band, and orchestra, since those are such, you kind of have to be in a group to do them. Do you expect if a child, if the family decides to be online only, will they be able to participate in that? Or will they have to sit out the semester?
Shane, I can speak to that a little bit. We started today conversations around band, orchestras, singing choir. There's a study that the National Foundation for Music Educators is conducting with droplets and aerosol spray. The results of that study were supposed to be completed today and shared. At this point in time, in that guidance, they recommend no large group ensemble singing. A smaller ensemble groups can meet for band. Obviously percussion and instruments don't pose the same potential risk around spread. And so we're continuing to have those conversations and waiting for that guidance to really help us make more definitive plans.
Okay, thanks, Leigh. And I'm sorry, I didn't ask you about, I just always think of Shane as my secondary person to go to. Thank you very much. Another question that I had was, I know that we're all relying a lot on the public health department to figure out when we're going to be in session, when we're not going to be in session, if a classroom has to close or whatever. Do you expect before the end of the month, before parents have to decide which plan they're going with? If you could look into the future, do you think that you'll be able to give more guidance to families on what you think the parameters will be? Because I I've been, you know, asked, well, if you think that it, you know, will close every other week, then, you know, I'll do this option or.
Yeah. Thanks for the question. I would tell you that I don't think we'll have any more definitive guidance than what we have here today, based on that conversation with Polk County Health, that it's really, I mean, so if you read through the four attachments that are related to Polk County Health and what they sent, that is really their guidance. And if anything changes, they said they would send us updates. But as far as really saying, like, every other week, they they really can't say that. It would really depend on cases that we would have in our buildings and not knowing that. But I would say in and out of virtual versus onsite throughout the school year is probably an expectation. But how often, like weekly or every, it's really hard to say.
Okay. And will parents be notified through all the regular avenues of email and app and all that?
Yes. When we when we have a case and have to notify for.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good. I think I'm good, Liz. Thanks.
Okay, okay. Jeff, do you have some questions?
Go ahead, Vicki.
Well, I had someone that needed a clarification about the ban for remote learning students. They didn't feel like they understood your answer or got enough of an answer. I don't know if anyone can add to it or not about if you do virtual learning, can you participate in band?
I don't know if Leigh, you want me to take that? I mean, I would say the answer to me would be S, virtually. I think we could connect with students remotely with our our music. Would you agree, Leigh?
I would. And I know that our band orchestra music department did an outstanding job of connecting with students during the spring. And so I wouldn't see any reason that we couldn't continue that moving forward.
Thank you for clarifying.
It might be a little challenging to have a concert with some of them online and some of them in person.
Right. I'm thinking it might look a little bit different, but.
Yeah.
Right. And related to that, we had a question that came in, and I don't know that we've talked about this yet tonight. So the question was around extracurriculars, whether that's a co-curricular like music or athletics. If I'm fully online, can I participate in the co-curricular extracurricular? And the answer is yes. We we actually talked to Legal to just verify that. And yes, that is the response.
Okay, Jeff?
Yeah, mine, I appreciate all the the question. I don't know if I necessarily have any additional questions. I'll I'll be voting yes, but I think the two things I would I would say was, one, I think we may need to make sure we have as much clear guidance for parents by that July 31st. I mean, in advance of that July 31st. And even if we call out the things that we we don't know, that's still to be determined, just so parents can make that informed decision. And then I think the other thing that probably needs to definitely happen in the next two weeks is really just making sure that we're getting the the feedback from the classroom teachers that will be the ones executing on the plan to make sure that, one, that we're getting their voice, but also thinking of things that we probably haven't thought of. And just making sure that we, again, that we can execute on on the plan conceptually. I I think it's it's maybe the best of a bunch of bad, bad options, is is one way to think of it. But so I think as long as that happens in the next two weeks, or if we need additional time, I don't know if I I guess I wouldn't be wedded to the July 31st date if we don't have those things done by that time, that we don't hold ourselves to that. And then it turns out to hurt us in the in the end. But I do think there's value in giving parents and teachers some sense of certainty, as much certainty as you can have, and so that they can start to plan what what the school year looks like. But so I appreciate everyone's work on this.
Liz, I know I said I was done, but one more question. So I've had a lot of questions and I want to make sure I understand it so that I'm not giving teachers misinformation about some of the requirements about using sick time. And I know some of that is still working out, but I think there's a, I've gotten some that are worried they'd have to use all their own sick time. But then I believe there was some CARES Act money to give them some, and it was confusing if it was 14 days, which would be almost three weeks of work, or is it continuous days? Is it workdays? Is that just once? Can they reapply for that? And and maybe some of that we don't know, but I think that's a real concern of some of our faculty and staff is the they have, you know, limited amount of sick time, and if they start dragging through that pretty quickly, that does concern them. So Carol, it looks like you're unmuted. So if there's that, and if there's any other HR components around benefits or anything else like that, that would be really helpful. So that I make sure I'm not giving out misinformation.
Yeah, and feel free to refer those folks to to myself or to Jesse. So there are six different kinds of COVID-19 leave. They're already plugged into our absence reporting system. And it depends on which aspect of those six types of leave, if it's for an individual who themselves is sick or if they're caring for an individual. So there's there's different pieces of that. There is for at least the the specific illness, then there is up to 14 days of COVID leave that can be taken prior to then tapping into their district provided sick leave benefit. But we're already in the process of creating, and we've talked about this with our School Community Relations Department, the need to provide additional clarification and information to our staff members. It's it's been sent out there, but some of that is, it can be really, it can be pretty confusing to navigate that. And so we will, we will be providing additional information. And feel free to ask them to give us a call too.
Perfect, yeah, it is confusing, right? You know, and plus we've changed health, there's just a lot of changes in this crazy time. And I don't think people are always aware of what what's available. And they don't always want to seem silly by asking, right? Like sometimes the assumption is that we should know this, but there's so many new things that there's a lot more resources perhaps than maybe even I realized.
So I I have a clear or a clarification, or I just want to make sure that I heard some of this correctly. So either Lisa or any of the admin team, feel free. So I I just, and it has mostly to do with Senate File 2310. Let me just make sure I have all my notes here. So if I heard correctly earlier, Dr. Ramey and team had been actually looking at another plan when Senate File 2310 had come down the pike. Senate File 2310 that was approved and is in law, but right now there's a lot of ambiguous language in it. And so there are a lot of people right now behind the scenes trying to figure out what it means. And it sounds like the Senate and the House have different interpretations of it. So we may be forced to abide by it. And that if we're forced to abide by it, it says that we may not have any online schooling at all unless somebody has a health condition. And if we do have online schooling, the consequence could be that we lose funding for those students. So I guess as we head forth, or as, you know, we're reflecting on this tonight, I look at some of our stats. We had 51% of our district plus teachers weren't in favor of the plan that our admin pivoted to when they saw the or heard about the legislation. We're not sure if that legislation is actually going to be a thing. I mean, we know it's a thing, but in terms of the interpretation. But yet our current plan has us going online for some families tonight. So if we approve this, my guess or my assumption is that our staff is going to start putting a lot of work in. And they're going to start probably collecting data from families, and they're going to probably start collecting data from staff to try to understand who is wanting to do what, to develop schedules, to be able to see what our numbers look like in order for social distancing, perhaps some other things. So my first I wonder is if this comes back, this legislative piece comes back saying that we absolutely cannot have any online. And we go through and do all of this work and engage our families, give them expectations that these things are going forth. My I wonder is what does that do for everybody, including the staff, having to do all this legwork and then undo it? My other question, or my other I wonder is, you know, if we if we change our assumption that some of our students would be doing online, you know, that would take our numbers down. But then the schools will no longer be doing online. We would then also need to be rethinking our safety plans for teachers and students. But if they do come and say, or they say, you know, you can do online, but yet this wasn't the first plan that we necessarily wanted. I guess my proposition is this, is that until we get that guidance from the DE on 2310, and then just pending the results of, I I have the utmost faith in our admin team that regardless of how we move forth, they will do everything in their power to make sure that our students and staff are safe. And I say that, and I say that authentically, and I really want everybody to hear me, that this board is committed, that this admin team is committed. It is not going to look pretty, it is not going to be easy, but I promise you, folks, we are going to do everything that we can in a situation that a lot of us have no control over whatsoever. But what I am asking is, before we head forth, and we still have all these unknowns, does it make sense to head forth until, in my understanding, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we should have these guidance this week? And so if we had that guidance to make sure that we're not going down any path, because it would impact all of our families. It would impact those that said, yeah, I want full in, and some of you guys are going online, that's great. I mean, it's going to change the dynamics of everything for everybody. And so I just want to make sure, and I heard Jeff talking about clear and expect, you know, communication and expectations. I just want to make sure that we have our ducks in a row before we proceed. And I'm not saying, you know, I would vote one way or the next. I'm just saying that I think this information is critical before we make this really important decision. And I understand that we're going to probably have to make 50 different decisions. This is going to continue to change, it's building a plane as we fly. But today I'm talking about this decision and not having this information that I think is valuable for us.
So Jen, I think one of your questions was around the guidance should be coming this week, correct?
Well, yeah, and I'm not even asking so much, I mean, I I believe that it's coming this week. I'm just saying that, Lisa, I think that your admin team has been rocking this for months. You all have put in so many hours and built so many great plans. If this isn't the plan that you think is the best plan for our students and our teachers, I want you to have some flexibility. And I'm not saying let's open up a whole, you know, necessarily Pandora's box. But I'm just saying that your expertise, if it is being pushed by potential legislation, let's wait in here what this legislation is and then proceed.
But I, so while we said we pivoted to this because of the legislation, we also said our recommendation is because of the data that we receive from our parents. So there's twofold from my personal perspective or our team's perspective on why the recommendation. There's a reason why option two came in to be, and then there's a different reason why we have the recommendation.
So help me understand that part just for a second, then? When I'm looking at 47.5% versus 51%, that said, I don't want to be in schools full time? How did that hap, I mean, help me understand that?
But we know that even in, well, one, hybrid option one may not meet the letter of seven file 2310, right? So let's just put that on the, put it over here on the side as well. But when, but we also know that hybrid option one, as written, doesn't allow for an online component. So it allows for 50% of all of our kids to come in two days a week and the other 50% the other two days a week. Right? So as we think about students and families who have that underlying health condition, to provide for them, then the online piece, right, is really important to us. Now, that doesn't mean that we couldn't adjust, but it would be like, if we also had to do the online component with the AB model, then we're really putting the two together. So our, oh, go ahead, Michelle.
I just wanted to clarify, because I I think I heard it earlier too with the hybrid one. When it would be a student coming two days a week and then the days that they aren't. It's not a virtual schedule connecting with their teachers because their teachers are with students. It would be learning task. We use that word asynchronous, so it'd be that more independent. That looks a little different than the fully online that you're talking about, Dr. Ramey.
True, true.
Every day.
And I appreciate you explaining this, because I think going into the weeds this deep is what a lot of people are also seeking to understand more. And I think I hear you saying there wasn't a full online option for some of our families. So I hear that as a benefit. And I hear also, Michelle, to your point, that because teachers would be still with other kids, they wouldn't be able to connect. And so there'd be a lot of independent work. And so that has a lot of challenges and barriers too. So I appreciate that, that really, really helps.
And that independent work still has to be learning and rigorous tasks aligned to standards because we can't just cut our time in half and say we're just teaching. What I mean, like, we still need to, we still need to make sure kids access their full curriculum as required in any model.
Right.
That makes sense.
Absolutely. So from where I stand, though, I still think, before we throw everybody into, hey, we're moving forth with this, but that Senate file is going to come back and either say, maybe say, no, you're actually not heading forth with this. I still think I would prefer personally to, I I will abstain from vote until I get that information. Because I think that that information is for your sake, because that's a lot of work for you all to start and not know if that's going to actually come to fruition or not.
The the only thing I would say, and I appreciate where you're at, Jen, and I I thank you for that. I believe worst case scenario would be instead of allowing this totally virtual with, like, we assign a teacher to that virtual, that at least what we've heard through the grapevine is that the kids, students would have to remote into the class. So while we don't believe that would be best practice, by any means, it'd be better practice to have the teacher fully online with those students. That the worst case scenario would be that instead of that fully virtual, we would have students at all levels remoting into the class to be able to count them as full.
Positive about that?
Well, I would tell you that I'm never 100% positive about anything until it comes, like the guidance. And then at times, even when it comes, we have questions. And when they tell us it's coming this week, it might be two weeks from now too. And I don't mean that to sound as it sounds, but it is, it's been real this spring.
Well, and I think people need to know that too, that you're constantly waiting for things to be handed down. And then districts are expected on the last minute to pivot and make it all work. And I think that that's really important, and I'm grateful. And I I think to your point that I I don't think anything is firm yet. And so until that guidance comes, I just don't want to send us down a rabbit hole until we just have that. So but I appreciate all of the effort. I think it's tremendous, all of this, and so I thank you for that.
Thank you, Jen. Is there any other discussion from board members? Okay, so we've got a motion by Jill and I think a second by Liz Brennan, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. All those abstain.
Abstain, thank you.
Okay, so the motion carries. Thank you so much to everybody. Next on the agenda item, on the agenda is item number 10, public hearing on the flexible account. This agenda item is a time and place when interested individuals can express their views, both orally and in writing, regarding a resolution to expend funds from the district's flexibility account. Peggy, have there been any written objections that have been filed?
I've not received any.
And is there anybody at the Learning Resource Center to offer an oral objection?
No, there's not.
Okay, thank you. Then I would call for a motion to close the hearing, please.
I move to close the hearing.
Second. Okay, there's a motion by Liz and a second by, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Oh, thank you, Vicky. All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the hearing is closed. So then is there a motion to adopt the flexible account resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vicky, second by Jeff Hicks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. Item number 12, approving the settlement agreement and release from David C. Cooper litigation. Is there a motion to approve these settlement agreements?
I would move approval.
Second.
Okay, motion by Liz Brennan, second by genuinely Wells. All, is there any discussion?
This is Lonnie, and I'll be abstaining on this one.
Thank you, Lonnie. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. All those abstaining.
Aye.
Thank you, Lonnie. Motion passes. Okay, item number 13, contracts. So we've got a number of contracts, everybody, hang on. First, we've got the nutrition software systems from Titan. Do we have a motion to approve the Titan School Solutions contract for the 2020, 2021 school year?
I'm of approval.
I'll second.
Motion by Liz Brennan, second by genuinely Wells. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Item number B, early retirement agreement. Is there a motion to approve this early retirement agreement?
So moved.
A second.
A motion by genuinely well, second by Jeff Hicks. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Item C, district snow removal pricing agreement for Jake's Lawn and Landscaping LLC. Is there a motion to approve the agreement with Jake's Lawn and Landscaping LLC to provide snow removal?
So moved by Liz.
Second, okay, got a motion by Liz Brennan, second by Vicky. I'm sorry, Lonnie, she waved at me, I just took. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you so much. Item number D, district turf care and extra services contract. Is there a motion to approve the contract with Jake's Lawn and Landscape LLC for mowing and supplemental ground services?
I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Liz Brennan, second by Jeff Hicks. So Christine, we just have two separate contracts here for two separate courses of duty for the same company, is that right?
That is correct.
Did they bid these out?
This is the third year with Jake's, we'll be going out for RFP next year.
Okay, gotcha, so let's just renew, okay, great. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. Item number E, Transportation Fleet Microbiostatic Antimicrobial Surface Protection Heritage Building Group. Is there a motion to approve this transportation fleet agreement with Heritage Group?
So moved.
Yeah, so moved. Jeff can have that one.
Motion by Jeff, second by Liz Brennan. Is there any discussion? Vicky is asking a question.
I I need a little explanation, please.
So this is kind of our first level of COVID response antimicrobial protection for the transportation service. This is a monthly treatment. It's kind of like a Scotchgard, you spray it on and it stays, and it inhibits microbial growth.
It's the deep cleaning that was referred to during our Return to Learn presentation, is that right, for transportation?
Yes.
Okay, good question, Vicky. Anybody else? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposing, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Item number F, Attendance Center Biostatic Antimicrobial Surface Protectant Heritage Building Group Contract. Is there a motion to approve this Attendance Center Agreement with Heritage Group?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by genuinely well, second by Jeff Hicks. Is there any discussion?
Hey Liz, the only thing I would note for others, and Christine mentioned this at the FNF, is that this was, this antimicrobial treatment was something that, it sounds like Christine had tested or the district had tested, was it year ago, 18 months ago, and found it to be really effective. So I think it's just helpful to know that this isn't something that hasn't been looked at by the district for a while.
Thank you, Jeff, great clarification. And it looks like we've got three, four separate contracts with Heritage Group, is that right, Christine?
Three contracts and then. Three contracts and then the last one is just a pricing agreement.
Okay, got you. And each contract is for a different area of focus within our district, right?
Okay, correct. And a different period of time, so.
Okay, got you. All right. Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion passes. Here we go. Let, the next one. We've got item G, Heritage Group Facility Daily Electrostatic Antimicrobial Treatment Contract. Is there a motion to approve this agreement with Heritage Group to provide daily sanitizing?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Jen, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, the motion carries. Item H, Heritage Group Substitute Custodial Pricing Agreement. Is there a motion to approve this agreement with the Heritage Group for substitute custodial service?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. Okay, that motion carries. Thank you, everybody. I know FNF worked through all that on Friday. You guys must have been there forever. Okay, the, the big show now for FNF, item number 14, Comprehensive Master Facility Plan. So we've got a facility plan attached here. I don't know, Christine, if you were planning on sharing that with us, like, or walking us through it, if you just want us to take action right away?
I believe Paul has a presentation.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Liz, and good evening. The, the presentation, the materials you have for you this evening, do have some changes from when we presented at the last board meeting. Christine and I have gone through the replacement cycle again, compared it to the scope of work that was identified in that facility audit and believe that we've been able to reduce that replacement cycle earmarking over that period of time by a collective $7.9 million. You'll also note that the total dollar amount of framework phase 2.1 is $2.5 million less. That's because we have placeholder for X Mathis with framework 2.1. And the facilities audit does have that same scope of work, but it also has it by fiscal year as well in grand totals of about $2.2 million. So we've renewed it from the total dollar amount in framework phase 2.1. So total dollars in aggregate down about $10.4 million. We've also included some materials from PFM. We've had some very diligent review of those materials, but we do have some corrections to note. PFM did inadvertently exclude the inflation factors with the audit work. I've worked with them this morning, this afternoon, and they do have some updated numbers for us in total when the facility audit is included. And when you also look at 4.0% inflation factor over this entire time period, that 4% is about $8.6 million or then a 2% inflation factor. It's also been suggested that we consider looking in years 11 through 20 with our replacement cycles. Been hesitant to do that because that's largely funded with voted pebble money. And the voted pebble money would require approval from the community through a referendum. And I'm reluctant to build that contingent revenue into the projections as it does require vote and approval from the community. So that, that's another suggestion that we incorporate, explain why we haven't done so, but that would certainly make years 11 through 20 look better. But that option is still available to future boards that they would have an election or referendum to continue that voted pebble. And I would anticipate legal counsel would say we could bring that to the community three to four years prior to the expiration of our existing voted pebble, which would go through 2031. Observations were made about the cost per square foot and raising questions. The cost per square foot that we've reflected in the exhibit today. The cost per square foot is simply a function of our design professionals' estimates and square footage of the buildings. I don't have a specific answer other than we're working with our, our design professionals' budgets at this stage. It's also been suggested that since we are so close in our cost projections and the ability to finance that possibly phase three projects be removed or delayed. You'll note that our recommendation and really the directive from FNF on Friday was that before the administration starts any phase three project, we would bring that phase three project to FNF for review. And FNF would provide guidance whether that project go on schedule or be delayed or deferred. We also at FNF discussed codifying, if you will, the suggestion to have this plan reviewed no less than every two years. And our suggestion is we would look at some of our existing board policies, see which board policy it makes the most sense to incorporate that language whereby the facility plan would be reviewed by FNF and/or the board in the less than every two years to make sure that we have properly earmarking our capital projects to reflect the most pressing needs and provide flexibility in delivery of curriculum if things change in the future. And if I have excluded or ignored something from our FNF committee, please fill in or correct me where I went wrong.
Can somebody, oh, sorry, Jill, maybe you're going to talk about it. I just have questions on the level three projects. That's my first question. Can somebody talk to that?
Sure. Christine, can I ask for your help in kind of the rationale we use to identify a project as level three? And how a level three project may appear over the course of a 10 or 11 year period of time?
Sure.
Prior to a one or two?
Yep, yep. So anything that was a level one, we considered to be, it, it was essential to the integrity of the building. So things like roofs, windows, things that if we lose control of, we will lose occupancy of the building. More of, I'm going to say cosmetic, but it's also just general appearance and usability of the building. And then threes, I'm going to just put under quotes, it's kind of a wish list item. It's something that would allow the district to develop additional programs, venues, things like that. A lot of those are around our athletic facilities, not turf replacement. We're considering that to be a level one because made that investment and it's something that we need to make sure that we keep. As far as I have, three would have to be for a one. Some of those ones are ones, which I just mentioned, like a turf replacement at the stadium, but we're not replacing that for another seven years. So to spread out the cash flows, some of those threes did land before ones. Does that make sense?
Going back and looking at the timeline, I think you guys were going to revise the timeline and send that out. Did I miss that? You were going to do some shifting of some of those projects and perhaps with all the emails, I've missed that.
Jill, I'm sorry. I think what we did was we moved $147,000, maybe year 2024 for Crossroads Park doors. And we moved that, Christine, I believe into next summer and that would align with the interior doors for the Hillside project.
We would be working on both of those buildings at the same time next summer.
Yeah, so I, I walked away from that meeting thinking we were, you guys were going to look at the timeframe, knowing that level threes were wish lists and that they would require more board approval to go back and look at those level one and twos that aren't replacement cycle. But which ones of those should take priority to a level three? And that's really what I was expecting to see. And if I didn't make myself clear on that, I will probably ask to amend the recommendation today to include that that happened. There's some real needs on there that I'd like to go forward before we would vote on any level three. I'm not talking about like Valley Stadium turf replacement. I totally understand. Hopefully that's eight years down the road, right? Like if we get some good turf life, I'm not talking about those type of level ones. But the other ones that aren't wish lists that we probably have an obligation, at least in my opinion, with taxpayer dollars. Paul, my other question for you is, did you email us the updated corrected documents? Because I'm feeling a little funny voting on stuff that's posted without having the updated documents. It makes me feel a little uncomfortable. And then I have one more question and then I'll be quiet and let you answer all of those in a series. On one of the documents, it lists on page four, it's the PowerPoint West Moyn, 10-year financial plan. Under slide four, the inflation sensitivity analysis. We had not talked about this and so I was a little surprised in reading that, this, and I'd like some more information on this because it makes me really uncomfortable. That the annual replacement program for buses and technology, it was reduced by almost $4 million because we were going to be in a deficit with that. And that makes me really uncomfortable even with getting approval for some of those level threes. We're going to have other, we could have a lot more technology needs. And to already have something stated, knowing we're going to have to reduce things before we've even started, certainly does not make me feel very comfortable.
Sure. Now, the, the updated materials from PFM I received late this afternoon and we can update the board and share that with the board as well. The inflation sensitivity, I think PFM made some assumptions that maybe they should not have made in conversations with PFM this afternoon. The dollar amounts that we are allocating for school buses, technology and the contingency are $3,415,000 a year. I believe they said they reduced their projections to $3.7 million. So I, I don't see where that was made. But in further conversations with PFM in the last fiscal year in the pebble fund, they, they did say they needed to reduce by a million dollars and $2 million for the 2930 fiscal year. So I, I think there's some further clarification from PFM. I think we're keeping technology, school bus replacement cycle and our $715,000 contingent, I'm sorry, the sales tax fund intact.
Hey, Paul, I know that these things usually go through finance, facilities and finance. So those four are the, the documents or the figures that you said you just got today. Can those go through FNF too?
Certainly.
Because I don't see, they're not on here, right? I didn't see them, but I didn't figure you had them on here from just today.
No, the, those, the updated ones would be the sales or the save revenue projections as well as sensitivity analysis with regard to inflation, the 10-year facility plan funding source and inflation sensitivity analysis.
A reminder that all documents have to be posted 24 hours before the meeting, so we couldn't have, he could, you know, for us to take action. So Paul, are you asking us to take action on documents that are not up to date?
I, I would not say that. It's part of the analysis that PFM has provided for us. We do have.
Inflation factor has changed from 2% and 4% to 4% and 8%. Is that what you said earlier?
No, I'm sorry, 2% and 4%. We ran originally in the past with 2%. Unfortunately, PFM took out the 2% inflation factor adjustment on the facility audit component. And that's what we've shared with you in tonight's materials. We've added that back in and then we've also assumed a 4% inflation factor for the facility audit and the replacement cycles. We've not done anything with phase 2.1 because it had already built in and assumed 4.2% inflation factor. We then asked for 4% of the other two components just so that if a 2% inflation was, was not realistic and we needed to be more conservative and we went with 4%, what would that look like?
Okay. So you're still saying that we're going to have to do some bonding in the future, right? You think it's about some, some amount of money, right?
Abs, absolutely, yes.
Yeah.
I, I need a clarification on something. Did I understand that for the level three, that the recommendation of the facilities and finance committee is that those three people make those determinations and the other four of us are not involved?
I don't want to speak for the committee members. I probably already have done so, but I'd ask that a committee member help address Vicky's question, please.
We, we actually talked about that at length in the committee and kind of going back and forth between, you know, should it go to the full board? And, and we settled on that that's part of the role of the facility and finance committee is to make recommendations like that. And so we thought it would, we ultimately decided that it'd be a better use of time just to keep it at FNF. Of course, that can change. I mean, we haven't even had a situation come up yet where we're quote unquote approving one of the level three asks.
Yeah, and I think the other thing too would be that there'd be a, this, these sort of projects would require the, the contract and the process. I think there would naturally be a, it's going to come to the board, right? I mean, is that right, Christine, in terms of before we would pay $4 million to re-turf something?
My understanding was anything that was a level three required board approval, but I'm going to have to pile on with what Paul said. I'm not sure whether the intention was for that to be FNF.
And is the FNF committee comfortable supporting this recommendation, knowing that there's been continuing conversations today? And that the board doesn't have the full picture tonight?
I, I think my just thought is hearing that there's new stuff and if FNF hasn't looked at it and it impacts what we're looking at today at all, I always prefer if FNF can look at it ahead of time.
Yeah, I was just asking FNF how they felt, since I'm looking at the woman, I'm the picture of another one.
Guess I thought I would just chime in anyway.
I guess I'm, I'm hearing some hesitancy by the board and I would be more than happy to discuss that another FNF. I don't know if there's any time considerations that we need to worry about with this?
I think the changes are mostly around the audit items. I think of immediate concern is the 2.1 option to start getting, I think it's Westridge, right, out to bid. So I'm not sure if it's possible to divide those up at all so that we do have a chance to review stuff, but still start working on 2.1. Because as I recall and looking at those documents, those, those figures were not inappropriately represented. It was just the audit numbers. Is that accurate?
And I would agree with that, Jill, yeah.
And Jen, I think the other comment I would make is I am comfortable because when you, if you apply the, one of the slides, it has the audit numbers and you can, you can see that they didn't add the inflation. But if you do the math for that inflation, when you couple that with the contingency money that's set aside, the fact that we're not saying we're absolutely going to do the level three, which frees up seven, over 7 million, and the fact that we're looking at this as a, to, we're going to reexamine it every two years. I don't, I am comfortable because I don't feel like it's, we're overextending or that we're tying our hands where we're, we're not going to be able to make decisions five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road. I feel that it's, there's enough flexibility that we could move forward with, from a bonding capacity. So I'm not opposed to waiting till we get those. I, I just don't think it's, yeah, when I do that math and look at it, I just don't see how that's going to materially change the analysis. Because at the end of the day, I'm not seeing much fluff, if any. I'm not seeing really any fluff in what we're saying we want to do. Again, level threes are really the ones. The rest is really the, we feel like we need to ease the space constraints at the elementary schools. We are adding the CTE component to, so ninth graders have it, and then we're just maintaining our facilities.
And for me, it's not about actually the money side. And for me, it's not about actually the money side of it. It's, we're setting a precedence that we're going to approve on something that we don't have full documentation of. That part makes me nervous as an elected official.
So I guess I would prefer that three of you, or at least two of the three of you, like, hammer it out, or, you know, that if you all felt comfortable, but if you don't, if we could err on the side of caution, if there's no danger in that.
What are the legal, I mean, what are our requirements by law for posting accurate stuff that we're voting on, attachments? That's where I'm getting, it's not so much the money. I get what Jeff's saying, and he texted me some of this before. But again, we haven't given the public an opportunity to view accurate documentation. So how do we know? We might not have more questions. That's where I am getting a little uncomfortable.
Well, why don't I? Well, we don't have a motion on the table, so is the board asking that Paul take the refreshed information back to FNF?
Well, I think it's kind of a double thing with the 2.1, waiting another two weeks for that, we'll put that behind. So that's why I'm asking legally, are we working ourselves into trouble by doing this?
Or can we just approve 2.1 and go back and talk about the rest of it?
That's what I was going to ask, Liz, if the board would feel comfortable at least proving 2.1, because that doesn't seem to be what's in question. So that work could start moving forward, and if people are uncomfortable and and I'll take responsibility, I do agree, we should have accurate documents up so people can view those documents. So we need, if we can wait on that piece and address that in a later meeting.
Okay. So then I would entertain a motion to approve option 2.1 as presented.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion by Liz Brennan, second by Jill Johnson. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you so much, Paul, for walking us through that, and we really appreciate your follow-up.
And Paul, it's not about the money, it's about our process, and I just, we've had enough comments on this and the facility plan. I think we owe it to our public to have them have the right of review before we vote on anything, even if.
Were you bringing forward formal language forward about the two-year review, or is that just something we have to remember, or?
Our committee suggested that maybe go to Policy Committee. I think, Lisa, you were going to, right? We're going to see if there was a policy that it might fit into.
Yeah, there is a, Paul could probably speak better than I could to it, but there is a policy around our facilities and so forth, and so we were thinking that it would fit into that policy. Paul, anything to add to that?
You're absolutely right. We started looking at that. It's probably a sentence or two, and we would just vet it with the Policy Committee and then bring it to the full board.
Okay, terrific. Thank you. All right, then, let's move on, if that's okay. We're item number 15, Facilities Projects. So Christine, I think you got the floor?
I do. So my report is attached. All of our large projects, Clive, Crestview, Roofing Projects, Indian Hills, they're all on schedule, scheduled to complete around the end of this month, which is awesome. There are a few new things added under Summer Projects 2020. Air Handling Unit for the pool. We did have some mechanical failures there that we're working on getting repaired. We're getting laundry stations installed in each building. Plus, we're working on retrofitting some of our drinking fountains over to bottle fillers. Those are all part of our COVID response, as well as some work on our HVAC systems, improving filtration and airflow of that nature. I won't go into detail, but if anybody has any questions, oh, there's a couple.
Christine, I just wonder, those things being that they're COVID response, and I think, Lisa, we've already spent all our COVID money. We haven't yet. Okay, so I'm wondering, like.
Oh, we've spent it two or three times, Liz.
I figured, okay. So we're just tracking it in case, you know, pennies fall from heaven, right?
We're hoping for some FEMA matches, my understanding, but we don't know for sure what they're going to pay. So we are tracking it all separate, yes. Right, our business office right away back in March set up line items for COVID so that we can track it very easily. Yes. And then I was going to mention, there's a couple of pictures attached. One of them is of the new playground over at Hillside, and the other is at the work they're starting at Westridge on putting up the new front facades. I believe they've done quite a bit of work since I took that picture, so I'm hoping by the next board meeting, I've got to give them that. Do you have any questions? I'll take whatever questions you have on.
The playground looks really nice.
Yes.
Christine, if you said it, and I missed it, I'm sorry. You think that, like, the Westridge is going to be done by the end of July? That's our target.
The majority of the work will, yes. We have a couple of benchtops that are probably going to be pushed in the first day of school, but everything else will be.
Okay, awesome. Thanks.
Okay, terrific. Ready to move on, then? Wonderful. So item number 15, Clive Learning Academy Phase 1 Construction Project Change Order Number 2. Is there a motion to approve this change order for the Clive Learning Academy Phase 1 Construction Project?
So moved.
I'll second.
Motion by Jen, second by Jeff. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Rex Mathis Auditorium, item number 17. Change Order Number 1. Is there a motion to approve this change order for the Rex Mathis Auditorium renovation project?
So moved.
Second.
Liz Brennan with the motion, and Jeff Hicks with the second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign? And the motion carries. Want to congratulate the board and the staff on the successful collaboration through a lot of tough decisions tonight and really open-hearted communication. Great leadership team. I'll ask if there's a motion to adjourn.
Say real fast how proud I am to serve with all of you. Like, we don't always agree, but I really feel we're all collaborative and we talk through things, and I've been on a lot of teams where that doesn't always happen. And I think we've really grown as a board, so thank you. And I know you all have put in hours this weekend, talking to community members, talking to Lisa, and trying to make the best decision. So we all deserve a really great little break from talking to each other, no offense, but if none of you can call me tomorrow, that'd be great.
Pro friend Jill, as always.
And with that, I'll motion to adjourn.
And I'll second that.
Okay, motion from Jill, second from Liz. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you, everyone.
Same. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night.
Good night.